Greetings ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to a bit of a new video. I'm gonna call this Miguel Martinon study session. In essence, I will go through some material from school that I've studied. And we'll study it with you, and maybe you can learn something with me, or I'll learn something from you. If you guys wanna help me, you can put it in the comments. You will occasionally hear my Discord notifications. Go off mostly because there are people in my class who happen to be in the Discord that we're studying together. But for the most part, I wanna keep this as a solo endeavor. I don't really know how long this is going to go, so let's start in order. The following information relates to twenty fourteen operations of Adler's company. So we know that the finished goods inventory at the beginning is equal to ninety thousand dollars. And we also know that the finished goods inventory at the end is equal to eighty-three thousand dollars. Okay, and we also know that the cost of goods available for sale is equal to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Just know that I will not be putting anything up on the screen other than the image of the of Shiro here simply because this is technically copyrighted material and I don't want to get busted for this. It's better to just leave the anime waifu on screen. Besides, it's more aesthetically pleasing that way. So the question asks us, we need to find the cost of good manufacturer. But before we do that, I'm going to give you what is called the the great total revenue to net income path. So we have total revenue at the top. This is just something that you should know. Total revenue is how much you get from selling things. If you subtract the total variable cost. Variable cost. You will get what is called the contribution margin. The contribution margin is quite useful because from there you can subtract the fixed cost. And you will get the operating income. Operating income, when it equals to zero, is where you find the break even point for those of you who don't know the accounting equation. Minus taxes, there are, there are a few equations, for example, assets equals stockholder equity plus liabilities. Or the other famous one being the accounting equa- the other accounting equation being sales price minus variable cost minus fixed cost equals to the operating income. Okay, so taxes, and then you subtract, and then from taxes you subtract other expenses. Because of course, expenses can be anything, and if you subtract taxes and other expenses from the operating income, you'll get the net income. Another key hit, if you see net in front of something, it means you have to subtract something. Is this true a hundred percent of the time? No. But let's get back to the assignment question. So, we know from experience that the formula for cost of good manufacturer, which is what we're looking for, is equal to the cost of goods available, so in this case it is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Minus the finished good inventory at the beginning, which is ninety thousand dollars. Understood? So if we subtract them, you will get a hundred and forty thousand dollars. In addition, we also need what the cost of goods sold is. Now, cost of goods sold is its own equation, which is the finished goods inventory at the beginning, plus uh the cost of goods manufactured, minus finished uh goods inventory at the end, which in turn is ninety thousand, plus a hundred and forty thousand, minus eighty-three thousand, eighty-three thousand was mentioned earlier. We subtract them, and we obtain a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars as our cost of goods sold. That is how you get your answer. We good? Very good. Up next, we have the following information, once again, for let's now we're using Ace Manufacturing Company. We know that the finished good inventory at the beginning is equal to ninety-nine thousand dollars. And we also know that the finished good inventory at the end is equal to a hundred and four thousand dollars. And we know that the cost of goods available they're equal to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm just doing a second example of this for you guys. So the cost of good manufactured, as we already figured out the equation last time, is equal to the cost of good available, so two hundred and fifty thousand, minus ninety-nine thousand. Because that is the finished good inventory before, at, at the beginning. Which in turn will give us a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Good, no? And from there, we need to solve once more, what is the cost of goods sold in this period? And from there, we can finish this up, so we have finished good inventory at B, plus the cost of good manufactured, minus the finished good inventory at the end. This in turn means that it is ninety-nine thousand, plus a hundred and fifty-one thousand, minus a hundred and four thousand. This number adds up to be a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Wait, that can't be right. Ninety-nine plus one-five-one minus one-zero-four, what is a hundred and forty-six? Never mind, it is right. It is correct. Good. Now we have a different kind of a question, okay? Now, the good news is that we have practice. The question reads, Veltin Corporation produces toddler's plastic slides in preparing the current budget. That's the product, okay, so they're selling plastic slides. They have an estimated they have an estimated three hundred thousand dollars in manufacturing overhead cost. Uh for sake of simplicity, I'll just do M O H. And five thousand, estimated by the way, hmm, in direct labor hours. This time though, the actual, the actual manufacturing overhead cost is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And is only, and then actual direct labor hours is four thousand nine hundred hours for D L H. I'm gonna give you some advice for this one. The math itself is pretty simple, but knowing when to stop can be rather difficult. In order to know the best time to stop, you should put the variables, so M O H and D L H in front. However, M O H can be removed and just substitute that for the dollar sign. The dollar sign and the D L H are your variable. If you are able to keep track of where they are, this math is even easier than it should be. We know that the predetermined overhead rate is equal to the finished, no, no, the estimated overhead cost divided by the estimated direct labor hours. In essence, the estimated is three hundred thousand dollars divided by five thousand D L H, which in turn gives us sixty dollars per direct labor hour. And that is how you get the predetermined overhead rate. But now we need to find applied manufacturing overhead cost. Applied manufacturing overhead, so M O H again. And to do that, you need to get the predetermined overhead rate, and you multiply it by the actual direct labor hour. So, in this case, it'll be sixty dollars over a direct labor hour, multiplied by four thousand nine hundred direct labor hour. The two direct labor hours will cancel out, and you will be greeted by two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars as your applied manufacturing overhead. Onto the next one. Now we have Jeff- Jeffrey Hospital Equipment Manufacturing Company. So what do we know about this company? We know that it is an estimated an estimate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in manufacturing overhead cost. And there's an estimated hold on, I got a message from somebody. Okay, we are good. We know that there's an estimated one-five comma zero 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 machine hour. Okay? Now, for the sake of simplicity, you can treat machine hour and direct labor o- and direct labor hours as same thing if you're only solving for one of them. If you're solving for both of them, we are going to have a bit of an issue, okay? Good, very good that we understand. Because if we don't understand, then we're kind of doomed. However, we know that the actual manufacturing overhead is eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we also know that the actual machine hour is fifteen thousand three hundred machine hour per year, all of these is per year by the way. So, don't be too confused about that. So once more, we need to find the predetermined overhead rate. Predetermined overhead rate, once more, is equal to the estimated overhead over the estimated machine hour. I said direct labor hour, but you can also calculate with machine hour. So you'll get dollar sign seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars divided by a hundred and fifty thousand machine hours. If you do that in the calculator, or you just happen to be really good at a written deck, you know that it is fifty dollars per machine hour. Be good? Very good. So then we need to know the manufacturing overhead that Jeffrey applied during the period. Once more, the applied manufacturing overhead is equal to hmm, the predetermined overhead rate multiplied by the actual machine hour. I know I said it was our labor hour, but once again, for because we're talking about machine, it's machine hour. A M A, A M H. And in this instance, it'll be fifty dollars over machine hour multiplied by a hundred and fifty-three, my apologies ladies and gentlemen, fifteen thousand three hundred machine hour. The machine hours cancel themselves, and we just are left with the number seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, because the dollar sign doesn't go away simply because we know it's the machine, it's the dollar sign, that's what we're looking for. Applied manufacturing overhead is given to you in the dollar sign. The sooner we all get that across our mind, the better we can solve these problems. Excellent. And now we need to have the question. Ethan Allen Interior Incorporated is a leading manufacturer and retailer of furniture and home decorated accessories. So that's your background, you don't really need to know that. We need to classify each of the following products as direct material, indirect material, direct labor, indirect labor, or manufacturing overhead. So A would be maple logs purchased to cut in the sandmill, that's a direct material. B, foam used in stuffing soda cushions, is direct material. Silk brocade fabric used to uphold chairs is direct materials. Wages paid to the woodworkers who assemble dresser drawers is direct labor. Glue used to strengthen the bed frame joints is indirect material. Staples used to secure upholstery fabric to the chair sets is direct material. Electricity to heat and light the factory is other manufacturing overhead. The sandmill foreman's salary is indirect labor. Wages paid to the forklift operator in the raw material warehouse is indirect labor. And depreciation on factory equipment is other manufacturing overhead, because that's going to happen no matter what happens. I hope that made sense for all of you. Up next, we have a new company, this time we're using Rector Company. I don't know what they're doing as a Rector Company, but is interesting, okay? It's funny because they have a CEO called Mark Rector. Anyways, the, it estimated that two million five hundred thousand dollars are in manufacturing overhead. And that it will have the estimated operating level, so that is your direct labor hours, so estimated direct labor hours are two hundred and fifty thousand direct labor hours. And we're also estimating four hundred thousand machine hours. So now, the questions are a little bit more complicated, because now we have direct labor and machine labor. So the first one is asking if we need to assume that Rector Company uses direct labor hours as a manufacturing overhead application base, we need to calculate the company's predetermined overhead rates. And as we already know, the predetermined overhead rate is equal to the estimated the estimated overhead cost. So two million five hundred thousand divided by, in this case, we need the direct labor hours. So that will be two hundred and fifty thousand direct labor hours. Which in turn gives us ten dollars per direct labor hour, that is our predetermined. Now we need to actually get the real manufacturing overhead applied, okay? Manufacturing overhead applied, so it's applied manufacturing overhead if you mean that number, that's the phrasing for you, you'll know that is the real deal, so ten direct labor hour. And we know from the question, the question tells us that it was three hundred direct labor hour to complete the work. So how much manufacturing overhead? We know that it's ten direct labor hours, ten dollars per direct labor, multiplied by three hundred direct labor hour. So we know that there's two, the direct, direct labor hour is numerator and the denominator, so we're going to cancel the math. And what we are left with is three thousand dollars as ma- as manufacturing overhead applied. And now, we need to get the predetermined overhead rate for machine hour. So once more, you know your little equation, P, uh predetermined overhead rate is equal to the main number, so in this case, two million five hundred thousand dollars divided by machine hour, so it'll be four hundred thousand machine hour. Good? Are we on the same page here? Great. If you do the math here, you will end up with six dollars and twenty-five cents per machine hour. Now, I don't really think they're paying the machines, but that's the predetermined overhead rate, funny enough. So we need to assume, we, now we know that it's a hundred and forty machine hour, okay, to complete the job. How much did we apply? Well, we know that M O H applied, so I'm just going to say M O H because I'm assuming you can all tell it's manufacturing overhead. Is equal to the six dollars and twenty-five cents over machine hour multiplied by a hundred and forty machine hour. If you multiply them together, you'll get, they'll cancel out the two M Hs and are left with eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. As for any additional information, we're not there yet. So now, let's look at the next question, okay? This time we have Lucy Sportswear, okay? I don't know if any of you actually use Lucy Sportswear, but it's very nice. Now, I know that this doesn't make sense for me to put this on the channel, why am I putting a study video, but move on, it's part of the channel now. And I might do these updates in the future, because it's, they're kind of fun, for me at least. So we know that in March, the company incurred the following costs to a job, okay? The following, so these are costs. And the costs include a hun- my apologies, thirteen thousand seven hundred indirect material. Okay? Good, the thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars was the cost of direct material, and direct. Okay, direct materials is that, and direct labor is four thousand eight hundred dollars. Okay? So once more, it is thirteen thousand seven hundred for direct material and four thousand eight hundred direct labor. The company also incurred a whopping one thousand four hundred dollars of administrative costs. The costs, administrative costs can be a salary or some other thing that the administration is running, okay? And the selling costs are five thousand six hundred dollars for, to the job, okay, those are the selling costs. Good. So what was required, okay, so required? It required quite a bit of things, it required eight hundred machine hour. It also had a factory overhead rate applied, so this is the, oh wow, we already get the overhead rate applied, okay? We also know that the, it's a twenty-five dollar per machine hour. Hold on. It would not be twenty-five dollar per machine hour. Because if that was the case, it wouldn't be applied, that would be the predetermined rate. The applied rate would be in exact hours, but I don't see them anywhere. Eight hundred machine hour, okay? So, to get the actual, this is, this is the predetermined overhead rate, that's the factory overhead. Okay? So, let's actually get the actual number. So we know that the uh M O H applied is equal to eight hundred multiplied by twenty-five. This will cancel out the M H and leave us with twenty thousand dollars. Good. So, or to do this, we're going to get some numbers here, okay? I hope you're ready. So to get the cost per shirt, so or cost of goods sold effectively, so we need to get the cost per unit, so cost of good sold per unit is equal to, it's the direct material, which is thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars, plus the direct labor, which is four thousand eight hundred dollars, plus the applied manufacturing overhead, which is twenty thousand dollars, which we just calculated, divided by the number of units, which in this instance is seven thousand units. If we put these numbers together, and we put it in the calculator, or we do it by hand, we get that it is cost per unit, or cost per shirt in this problem, is five dollars and fifty cents. Onto the final question, we go back to Rector Company. Okay, we go back to them for this one. And you'll notice some similarities in the numbers. Rector Company. Yay. Rector Company manufactures line overweight running shoes, we, we know what this is. Okay, so once more, with the estimates manufacturing overhead is equal to two million five hundred thousand dollars. Good, very good indeed. And when the Rector Company uses direct labor hours, the manufacturing overhead rate, predetermined overhead rate, oh, okay, so this actually gives us okay, so predetermined manufacturing overhead. Okay? Because predetermined overhead rate, there is no manufacturing there, my apologies ladies and gentlemen. It is only predetermined overhead rate. Good, is equal to, and it gives it to us in the question thankfully, because they're very nice people, is ten dollars over direct labor hour. And we also have that predetermined overhead rate is equal to six dollars and twenty-five cents over direct labor hour. These numbers should be familiar to you because we calculated them a few questions ago. Additionally, he estimates, so these, these are more estimates, okay? That the company operate level, so is two-five-zero comma zero-zero-zero, so twenty-five, no, two hundred and fifty thousand direct labor hours, okay? He also estimates four hundred thousand direct machine hours, or you can just put machine hour because it's not necessarily direct. And at the end of the year, so these are the actual ones, is two hundred and forty-five thousand direct labor hours. And we also have for the, another actual, it is four hundred and ten thousand machine hour. And we know that the actual manufacturing overhead actual M O H is equal to two million five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Okay, this is real money here. Okay? So let's look at the direct labor hours, if it uses direct labor hours as manufacturing overhead application base, how much overhead was applied to the jobs during the year? So, to get the application, we look at the real number, which is two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. My bad, two hundred and forty-five thousand direct labor hours. And we're going to multiply it by the predetermined overhead rate for direct labor hours, which in this question is ten dollars over the direct labor hour. In this instance, our overhead applied, okay, will be two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? This is overhead applied. So now it's asking us that using direct labor hours as the application base, was manufacturing overhead under or over-applied by the year? So, to get this number, we look at the actual manufacturing overhead, which in this question is two million five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And we subtract it by the overhead applied, which is two million four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And if you do this math, you get sixty-five thousand dollars. And since we subtracted by the number, instead of, instead of subtracting by the two million five hundred and fifteen thousand, instead, we under-applied, so we under-applied by sixty-five thousand dollars. Okay? That's our manufacturing overhead. We just did not apply enough. Now let's look at Rector Company, using machine hours as the basis. So, once more, we have to get the machine hour overhead applied. Give me a quick second, I'm about to get a notification. Okay, just stop the notification. I'm going to I'm not sure what I'm gonna do, I, I think I just need to I'm thinking about what I need to do here. So I'm going to make something, I'll be right back, hopefully it's not more than a minute. And if it is, I'll just put how much time it could skip in the content title or something. But that's just to serve as the basis for now, I believe we can calculate the machine hour overhead applied. So let's see if you managed to calculate the next step of the question, if you were told to calculate it in mach- manufactured overhead with machine hours as the base, okay? So, you should have gotten two million five hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. But if you did not, I will go over the method on how to solve it. So once more, we know that the predetermined overhead rate for machine hour is Is six dollar and twenty five cents. Good. Six dollar and twenty five cents over machine hour. And we multiply that by the actual machine hours, which in this case was four hundred and ten thousand machine hour. Once more, the machine hour is removed from the equation because that is how variables work in these. In fractions when you cancel them out. And if you multiply them together, you should get the number. Unless I'm wrong, and in which case I'm not, is. Two million five hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred dollars. Good, and that's your overhead applied. Give me a quick second, someone's at the door. So apparently I was wrong and in reality, nobody was at the door, weird, I know. That was weird. So, once more, we need to determine if we over or under applied and by how much, okay? We know because we're adults and by looking at things that two million. Five hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred dollars. Is greater than. Two million five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Okay? So we subtract by the smaller number. Which lets us know that we over applied. So we already know that we over applied. By. And if you do it by your hand, or you can do it in your head or have a calculator, you'll know that you over applied by. Forty seven thousand five hundred dollars. That is the end of the chapter four review, I look forward to seeing you in the next one. Now we move on to chapter three. Okay, good. Know what, gonna use the restroom. I decided to go get a water because, well, quite honestly, my throat is parched from chapter four. For those of you who don't know, I am drinking hydrate alkaline water nine point five pH or higher with purified water with electrolytes for taste. So let's look at the questions here. Awesome. Juliana Abdallah owns and operates First Cakes, a bakery that creates personalized birthday cakes for child's first birthday. The cakes, which sell for. Sixty four dollars is equals to selling price. Good, good to know this. And feature an edible picture of child or shit throughout the country. Typical month results are as follows, so we know that sales revenue. Is equal to nine hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. We know variable expenses. Are equal to. Six eighty seven thousand three hundred and sixty. We know that contribution margin. Margin. Is the sales revenue minus the variable expenses, which is two hundred and twenty nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. We know that the fixed expenses. Is equal to hundred and twenty seven. Five hundred and twenty dollars, hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And when you subtract the contribution margin from the fixed expenses, you get the operating income. Equal to a hundred and one thousand six hundred dollars. Good, great. So now, we need to take contribution margin per unit, okay? We know that the contribution margin. Is already given to us, but we're not using that. Instead, we're getting it per unit, so. To get that, you need to take the sales price per unit. Minus the variable cost per unit, however, that is the wrong equation. To my knowledge. No, that's incorrect, that's incorrect, I'm so sorry. First, no, no, that is the right equation, so contribution margin per unit is the sales price per unit. Sales price per unit. Subtracted by variable. Cost per unit. Okay, so now we need to get the sales, the sales price per unit, how do we do that? Well, we get the net revenue. Or the sales revenue. Or the total revenue, whatever you want to call it, just call it the revenue in this case. So we need to get sales price per unit. By doing that, we take net, uh, we just take revenue, which is. Nine hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty divided by the selling price, which in this case is sixty four dollars. Good. And that will give us. One thousand four hundred, what, fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty cakes. Good. And then we also need the variable. Cost per unit. Okay? Variable cost per unit is equal to our variable cost, so it'll be sixty. Six hundred and eighty seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Divided by the amount of cakes, okay? Which in this case, we now know if you solve SP per unit is fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty cakes. You put, you divide these in a calculator, or you use math, or you do long division, whatever, and you'll get forty eight dollars per cake. Good. So now, you're going to take the sales price, which in this case is sixty four dollars, minus. Okay, this is a cake, minus forty eight dollars per cake, okay? And you will get sixteen dollars per cake. And that is your contribution margin per over unit, just so you know. Next, the question asks you to get the monthly break even point in units. Well, we know that the break even point is when the operating income is equal to zero. So the way you get that is you get sales revenue, I mean, selling price, okay, sales price. I believe it's sales price, yes, it is. No, wait a minute, wait a minute. Operating income, so we know it is, it's a PX minus VX minus FC. Equalling to OI at OI equals to zero. So in a sense, it'll be sixty four. Minus forty eight, sixty four X minus forty eight X minus fixed costs. So it's a pretty big one, I believe. Yes, hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Those were already given in the fixed expenses section of the question. And those are equal to zero. So we'll know that it is sixteen X, X is the per cake, equal to a hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Okay, so now we need to buy both sides by sixteen. And we'll get seven thousand nine hundred and seventy cakes. That need to be made, and that is your break even point, so. The question is break even at seven thousand nine hundred and seventy cakes. And this answer is not in dollars, as the dollars would cancel themselves out on both sides. Good. So now we need the contribution margin ratio. We know that the contribution margin ratio. Is equal to the contribution margin minus the sales revenue. Or the contribution margin per unit minus the sales price per unit. In this instance, we know that it is sixteen, which is our contribution margin per unit. Okay, then we need contribution margin ratio is equal to contribution margin per unit divided by. Sales price per unit, okay, and we know that it's the per unit because we're giving them in unit. Otherwise, we would not be able to have them. Does that make sense? Good. So it is equal to sixteen divided by sixty four, so that is the selling price per unit. Okay, unit. And that gives us zero point two five or twenty five percent. Which is our contribution margin ratio. Good. So now we need the break even sales. Break even sales is total fixed expenses divided by the contribution margin ratios. So, it'll be one hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred and twenty. Divided by zero point two five, and that will give you. Five one zero comma zero eight zero in break even sales dollars. Okay? If you want to make your life easier, you could also multiply the amount of cakes needed to break even times the. Sales price of the cakes, so you could also do seven thousand one hundred and seventy multiplied by sixty four dollars. They should equal, otherwise you did something wrong. Up next, we have this question. A delectable dish printer republishes the best selling Captain Casio cookbook that sells for eight dollars, so we know. That the sales price. Is equal to eight dollars. The variable costs. Variable costs. Are equal to three dollars per cookbook, per unit. And sales price, eight dollars per unit, obviously. We also know that the fixed costs. So these are not per unit, they're only by dollars. Is equal to three hundred and fifty one thousand three hundred dollars. That's a lot of money. We also know that the tax rate. Is equal to twenty five percent. Usually, tax rate varies by where you are located in the States, so tax rate can always be different. And we also need to know how many cookbooks must be sold, so we're trying to find X to generate in net income. A number that is a hundred and ninety seven thousand four hundred and seventy five dollars in net income. So, do this, we are going to use the accounting equation, that not the assets equal to liability plus shareholder equity. The other accounting equation, which is the operating income equation. Good, so to set it up, it is X, which is our units, the amount that we need to sell. Open parentheses, sales price minus variable cost. Minus, close parentheses minus, fixed cost. Is equal to. Our big net income number. Divided by one minus tax rate. So in other words, is. Eight X minus three X minus, this really large number. Three five one comma three zero zero. Equals to. Net income. Which is in this instance, a hundred and ninety seven thousand. Four hundred and seventy five dollars. Divided by one minus zero point two five. So now, let's make things easier on us, it is five X. In dollars, by the way, is equal to. One nine seven. Comma four seven five divided by zero point seven five. Plus three five one comma three zero zero. Excellent. So for the sake of simplicity, we'll get five X is equal to. A hundred ninety seven thousand four hundred and seventy five divided by point seven five. Is two six three three zero zero plus three five one comma three zero zero. Which is what we had earlier. So then we're gonna get five X. Is equal to six hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred. We divide these by five. And we should get. One hundred and twenty two thousand nine hundred and twenty cookbooks. I know it's a bit difficult to explain, but as long as you know the equation, everything will be fine. If you don't know the equation, do not expect this to be walking the park, in fact, expect it to be the exact opposite. Good. So now I need to do this one. Carla Vista Machine Works produces soft serve ice cream freezers, the freezer sell for. Hundred and six, uh, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. And the variable, that's the sales price. And the variable cost is a hundred, no, it's twelve thousand four hundred dollars, that's the variable cost, and these are both per unit, okay? Carla Vista incurs, okay, so we know that fixed cost is equal to. Twenty six million three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the tax rate. Is equal to twenty nine percent. And the net income that we need to generate. Is seven million seven hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. So now we need to find the number of freezers that must be sold. And that's the X, okay, we're good, we're doing well. So far, I believe we're doing well. So once more, it's the same formula, it'll be X, open parentheses, SP minus. The C, close parentheses minus SFC, equals two NI over. Parenthesis, one minus tax rate. Close parentheses. So now that we have all that solved, we have to put it into the equation. So it'll be. Sixteen thousand five hundred X minus twelve thousand four hundred X. Sixteen thousand five hundred X minus twelve thousand four hundred X minus. Twenty-six million three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Equalling to. Seven million seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. Divided by. One minus zero point two nine. That makes sense to me, so far. So, from here on up, we're going to get. Our handed-on-the-calculate calculator out. And we know that a hundred and sixty-five thousand minus a hundred, twelve, why does I'm? Sixteen thousand five hundred minus twelve thousand four hundred is equal to. Four hundred, four thousand one hundred X. Remember, we're looking for X here. Which is equal to, and let's just get this one the other way, seven seven six five zero 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 divided by. One minus point two nine. Would give us. One zero nine three six six one nine point seven one eight three. Which is our net income divided by one over tax rate. Plus. Two six three three zero 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 zero. Two six three three zero comma zero zero zero. We have four thousand a hundred X is equal to. One two three four five six thirty-seven million two hundred and sixty-six thousand. No. Two hundred and nineteen. Oh, yes. Two six six thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents. So we take this number and divide it by four one zero zero. And we should get X is equal to nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine freezers. There are decimals, but we can ignore it for now. Good? Very good indeed. Okay, so now we need to find annual break even point in units and in sales dollars. Great. So, let me take a sip of water, cause I need a hydrate. Sales price. Sales price. Is equal to nineteen dollars. The variable cost is equal to ten dollars. And I know that the fixed cost is equal to forty-six thousand zero zero zero. Okay, cause you know it's forty-six thousand dollars per month. Good. So now I need to find annual break even point, and this is a trick that they're gonna try to get you with. So before we even do that, we need to convert the fixed cost into per year. So per year, you'll do forty-six thousand divided by month. And then we're gonna multiply it by twelve month. Divided by one year, because that's equal to one, one over one is equal to one. And in turn. You will get. Five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars per year. But since we are notes annual, the year will be cancelled out and it's just five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Good, so that's our real V F C, fixed cost. Break even point is when S P X minus V C. X minus F C is equal to O I at O I equals to zero. Good. So it'll be, this is a break even point in in frisbees. So I need to find it in frisbees, it'll be in. In frisbees, it will be done in looking for X. So break even point. In units. Is equal to nineteen X minus ten X minus. Five hundred and fifty-two thousand equals to zero. So it'll be nine X equals to five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. X is equal to five hundred fifty-two thousand divided by nine. And I should get sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-three frisbees. Okay, this is in units. Now I need the break even point in sales. And this is in sales dollars, so. What I'm going to do is quite simple, I'm going to multiply this by nineteen. I believe, yes. So it'll be equal to sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirteen multiplied by nineteen. Six one three 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 times one nine. And that should get me. One million a hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-seven break even point in sales. And this is in dollars, by the way. So quite a lot of money. And now. Uh let's say I want to earn. Two twenty-two thousand in operating income, so say O I is equal to twenty-two thousand dollars. It's a lot of money, by the way. Well, the math doesn't change too much, instead of O I equal to zero, now we do O I equal to twenty-two thousand. So it'll be like before, nineteen X minus ten X. Minus five five two comma zero 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 dollars. Equalling to twenty-two thousand dollars. So once more, we get nine X is equal to. Five, what happened? Five hundred and fifty-two thousand plus twenty-two thousand. Which will give us five seven four thousand dollars. We're going to divide that by nine. And we get six three seven seven eight frisbees. That's how many frisbees you must sell to break, to get that much income. Okay, sold. Good. So now, let's say hypothetically, okay, say. Net income is equal to seventeen thousand two hundred and the tax rate. Is equal to thirty-one percent. Great, very good. So what do we do? What do we do in the operating income? It's the same formula again, so S P X minus V C X minus F C equal to. N I over one minus tax rate. So in this instance. We already know that it's just going to be nine X, because I don't want to do S P minus V C again. And then we all, is minus the fixed cost, which is two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Is equal to the net income. Which in this instance is seventeen thousand two hundred divided by. The tax rate, so it will be one minus thirty-one thousand or sixty-nine percent, right? Hope, I hope it's sixty-nine percent, otherwise it's already funny. It is point sixty-nine. Good. So we know that one seven two zero zero divided by point six nine is equal to. Two four nine two seven point five four. Obviously, the decimals keep going, but since it's in dollars, that's all we need to get for dollars. Good. Going to take a sip of water again, I'm really thirsty, yeah. So we'll get nine X is equal to. Two four nine two seven point five four plus five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So then we divide by nine, so we get plus five five two zero zero zero. Divided by. Nine. And I should get. Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute, something is wrong. Oh, cause I multiplied like a dollar. Wait a minute, something about this is not right. One seven two zero zero. Divided by one minus point one. Oh. Hold on, hold on. Okay? We take that number. Oh, 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 it's just meaning us to find the operating income, it doesn't need it to find the unit sold. My mistake, if it just needs us to find the operating income, cause it says look, find. O I, O I is equal to the tax, the net income divided by one minus tax rate. And we already solved it a while ago, it is twenty-four thousand a hundred and twenty-seven dollars with fifty-four cents. Okay. And then finally, we need to know how much, how many frisbees they need to sell to earn that net income. So now, once more. Need to use the actual number. And it will be, we already did the number, so it'll be the number plus the, it'll be the O I plus a hundred and fifty thousand. Divided by nine, uh do the divided by nine after you do the addition, so you can use a parentheses there if you need it. And you should get. X is equal to six four one oh three frisbees. Or if your math is a bit different, you should get six four one oh four frisbees. But I don't think it's going to be that large of a gap, it could be, but I doubt it. Okay. This one is also pretty interesting, we've got three more questions left. Andrew Sinclair operates lawn care business, offers customer a choice of two services. First service is basic lawn care. Basic lawn care. And that includes mowing and trimming, we don't care about that. It's bill, it's a sales price is equal to forty-five dollars per hour. The variable cost is equal to twenty-six dollars per hour. And there's also deluxe care service. Where the sales price is equal to sixty-three dollars per hour. And the variable cost is equal to twenty-six dollar per hour. That's good. That's good. Andrew currently spends one hour of his time. Providing deluxe care, so it's one, uh so one H R for deluxe care. And five H R for basic care. Okay? And no matter what happens, fixed costs are equal to a hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Good, good. So now, we need to set up the profit equation. Profit equation. So I need to use the contribution margin per hour to calculate my answer. So in this case, looking at the first one, which is the deluxe service. Will be sixty-three X minus twenty-six X. Okay, plus five times. Forty-five X minus twenty-six X. Minus the fixed cost, which is a hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Equals to operating income, that is the profit equation. So if you want this in a more simplified term, the simple way to write it is thirty-seven X plus. Five times nineteen X. Minus one nine five eight 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 equal O I. So now we need to see how many hours of each service type Andrew must provide in a year to break even. Well. Like before, it is a simple equation. Okay, we know that five times nineteen is ninety-five. Plus thirty-seven, well actually a hundred plus is a hundred and thirty-two X. So one three two X is equal to. Hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Good, good. And it's also in dollars, so the dollars will cancel out, but we don't care about that enough. So then we need, we know X is equal to a hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight divided by one thirty-two. How much is that? One thousand four hundred and eighty-four, okay, now someone's really at the door. Okay, more fun stuff. Very fun stuff indeed. So that's, so X is equal to hundred and fourth, it's one thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. And hours of the big deluxe lawn care. We know it's deluxe lawn care because there's only one hour. To find the basic care, we know that it is five hours, so we'll take these X, and this is for deluxe. So the, the basic care will be five X, which is why the five is outside in the profit equation. Is equal to seven thousand four hundred and twenty hours of basic. Now, if somehow our friend Andrew is able to get them all to be equal. Then instead of the regular X and five X, we'll just set up the equation with three, because five plus one is six divided by two is three. So it'll be. Three times thirty-seven X plus three times nineteen X. Minus hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars in operating income, equal to operating income. So, once more. We take these numbers. We're going to get three times thirty-seven is a hundred and eleven X plus three times nineteen. Which is fifty-seven X. Is equal to. Hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. So then one 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 plus five seven is equal to a hundred and sixty-eight. X equal to hundred and ninety-five thousand eight eight eight. Will divide a hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight by a hundred and sixty-eight. X is equal to one one six six. However, since they get the same number, it'll be multiplied by three. So three X is equal to. Three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight hours. And since they're the same, that's for both the deluxe and basic lawn care service. And that's how you do it. The final two. We have two more questions left, and I'll get them done. Okay. So I'll do the pictures of each type must be sold. So next question is the Blossom Incorporated, okay? Blossom. Incorporated. So they sell two types of products, it's uh plastic pictures. So they sell two types of products. It's uh plastic pictures, plastic picture and glass picture. Excellent. The plastic pictures have the sales price is equal to thirty one per unit. And I'll just put unit P so that I know it's plastic. And the variable cost is equal to sixteen dollars. Okay, per unit. And the glass pitcher has the sales price equal to forty six dollars per unit. And we put in G there. And the variable cost is twenty five dollars per unit G. And the fixed costs at the end of this is equal to ninety, nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred dollars, nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred dollars. Nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred dollars. That works. And the current sales plan, so sales plan is for a hundred and four, is, why do I keep saying a hundred? No. Fourteen thousand plastic pitchers. So I need fourteen thousand plastic pitchers and I need forty two thousand glass pitchers. If you take forty two divided by fourteen, you'll get three. So the ratio is three to one. Which means getting a profit equation is very easy. It will be, because the glass needs to sell more, it'll be three times forty six minus twenty five X minus, uh plus yes, plus, that is the, what we need for the profit equation. Good. It'll be one times, so you don't need to write the one. Thirty one minus sixteen,括号 parentheses, X. Then this will be minus, because it's the fixed costs. Nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred. Good, 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 good. And to get the break even, I mean equal to Z. So from here, from here, we can do forty six minus twenty five equal to twenty one, three times twenty one, X plus fifteen X is equal to ninety, nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred. So it's actually sixty three X plus fifteen X is equal to nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred. And all of these have dollar signs, but because there's dollars on both sides, you can cut them out and remove that variable, and that's how you know you're trying to get the amount of units rather than the amount of dollars. Good. So this will give us seventy eight X equal to nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred. So X will be equal to nine hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred divided by seventy eight, which should give us twelve thousand six hundred units. In this case, we need to find, that's for plastic pitchers. You could technically do it with the large fourteen thousand, forty two thousand, but just simplify. It makes your life easier. So then to get the amount of plastic pitchers, I need to be, the glass pitchers, I need to be sold, because you need to sell three times even the glass pitchers. We take this number, we multiply it by three, and we know that I need to sell thirty seven thousand eight hundred glass pitchers. Good, 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 good. However, let's say they get a new offer and changes the variable cost for plastic to be fourteen. Okay, so this is the new case where, you know, plastic pitcher, same. However, VC is now equal to fourteen per unit instead of instead of the famous sixteen. And then for glass pitcher, it'll be the same all around. So the contribution margin per unit is once more going to be, so to get the contribution margin per unit for plastic is going to be thirty one minus fourteen, which is seventeen dollars. And then for glass, it's going to be forty six minus twenty five, so that stays the same, it's twenty one. So now I need to find a new break even point, a new break even point. I know that for glass, I need to sell three of them. So it's going to be once more sixty three X, because that does not change, plus seventeen X is equal to nine hundred eighty two thousand eight hundred. All these are dollars, but like all algebraic rules dictate the dollars will cha, the dollar sign will cancel out, so I know I'm looking for units. Sixty three plus seventeen is eighty units. For every eighty units equal nine hundred eighty two thousand eight hundred. So I'll take nine hundred eighty two thousand eight hundred and divided by eighty. That'll give me X is equal to twelve thousand two hundred and eighty five. And that's, so this one gives me plastic pitchers. Because I need to find one plastic pitcher, and I need to get three glass pitchers. So, once more, I'll multiply it by three and that'll give me thirty six thousand eight hundred and fifty five glass pitcher. That's how you get that one. And for the final question, I need to find Peyton Sanchez's popcorn stand markup percentage. Her her markup, her price, how much she needs for specific price, and even you find more market percentage. So let's look at the first one, okay? What do I know about this one, okay? So I know that the cost to produce a bag of popcorn, so production cost or PC if you want it, is equal to fifty cents. Or you could do zero point five dollars, zero point five zero dollars. Whatever works for you. And the sale price is equal to two dollar and thirty cents. So I need to find a markup percentage. Markup percentage is equal to the sales price minus the production cost price. So it'll be two dollars and thirty cents minus fifty, minus fifty cents divided by the production cost. That's how much you s, you mark that out by. Okay, obviously. And if you put that in your calculator, or you just know it off the top of your head, or you can do it by hand, your choice, you'll get three hundred and sixty percent markup price. That's insane to me. That really is insane to me. Is that really the markup price? Yeah, that's it. Sales price minus production cost divided by production cost. So that's how you get her markup percentage. But let's say she wants to earn five hundred and forty percent markup price. What's her price that she must charge now? So now, in this case, it is something ridiculous. It is going to be five point four is equal to X minus zero point five multiplied, divided by zero point five. So to do this, it'll be five point four times zero point five is equal to X minus zero point five. So five point four times zero point five is going to equal two point seven is equal to X minus zero point five. So two point seven plus zero point five is equal to three point two. And you add a print and you add a zero, because it's in dollars. So it's three dollars and twenty cents if she wants to earn a five hundred and forty percent markup. It's a crazy markup. So now, once more, we're looking for the markup percentage. And that's going to be price per bag is equal to two dollars. In this new scenario, the sales price drops to two dollars. What a nice deal she's making. So now, it's going to be two minus zero point five divided by zero point five equals X, which is the markup percentage. So it's going to be one point five divided by zero point five equaling to X. One point five divided by zero point five is equal to three. So the markup percentage at two dollars will be three hundred percent. A few more exist, but at this point, based on how the assignment is going, I either know it or I don't. Have a nice day.